This conference will now be recorded.
Do we have, I know, we have Councilman Richard, we have Councilman Stevens on the line. Does anybody want to, just Richard?
We have a new caller on the line, can you state your name, please?
Kelly Stevens.
Thank you, councilman.
It's always so somber before these meetings begin.
You should prepare to praise Parker Paul.
Are you waiting for Councilman Cox? No, he's not going to be here. And six o'clock? It's time to call the order, the regular meeting of Councilor City Council Tuesday, April 27th. We do have a forum, and we have Pastor Jim Powell from August House here to lead us in the application and pledge.
Joe, we come today to recognize you as the father of all creation. We ask you to lead and guide these council members and those in attendance today. Help them to go about peaceably and help them to go with wisdom. Help them to direct the path that each and every individual would agree with and that they will abide by. And we pray these things, we pray these blessings upon these people in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Why don't you call him, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
You say Councilman Cox, yes, Councilman Cox.
But right? Richard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. It's a non-agenda items, residents may address an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents can provide their name and address, council requests comments be limited to five minutes. I don't have anyone that has signed up, but there's anyone in the audience. Let's say no one, we will move to consent agenda, all matters listed under consent agenda. Routine by the city council will be a one motion, there will not be discussion of the items, if discussion is desired, that item will be removed, will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from April 13, 2021, regular meeting of the Councilor City Council. B, approval of claims for April 7, 2021, through April 20, 2021. C, consider and act upon an application for beverage garden permit for the Grill Market Steak Festival on May 1st, 2021. D, consider and act upon an application for beverage garden permit for the Dancing Rabbit Music Festival on May 8, 2021. E, consider and act upon ratification, change order number one, Sunrise Construction LLC in amount of $8,790. This is to lower 40 feet of water line, including concrete driveway replacement, type fitting materials and equipment for the Sonny Way drainage improvement project. Change order also adds five days to substantial completion date. Consider and act upon ratification of change order number two, Sunrise Construction LLC in the amount of $14,507.70. This is to add a concrete junction box to connect a discovered 24-inch concrete pipe for the Sonny Way drainage improvements project. This change order also adds 14 days to substantial completion date. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like, I would like C and D removed.
Say D, is it all?
Yes, and also C, C and D.
Okay, okay. In that case, I take a motion and a second, or item B, B, E, and F, motion, Councilman Smith. Right, any discussion? Why don't you call him, please?
Yes.
That right?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Item C, Councilman Richard?
I don't have anything to say, I just, I don't want to vote on either one of these items.
So, you, okay, you don't, you're, you're going to be abstaining from the vote, is that what I understand?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so take, if there's no objection, I'll combine item C and D. Motion in a second to approve items C and D, motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Vote Right, any discussion? Corey, would you call it, please?
Councilors?
Yes.
That right? Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Abstaining.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on a public hearing, all persons interested in any ordinance listed under schedule business shall have an opportunity to defer recording to Article 2, 212B of the City Charter. Tonight is ordinance amended in Councilor City Code, Chapter 6, alcoholic and non-intoxicating beverages, Article 5, leverage gardens, Section 6-192, leverage garden permit, repealing all 15 ordinances and binding for separability. Take a motion in a second, open to public hearing, motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Vote Right, any discussion? Why don't you call it, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
That right?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, so we are now in a public hearing, if anyone would like to address this item, please step forward. Saying no one, I take a motion in a second to close public hearing, motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Vote Right, any discussion? Corey, would you call it, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
That right?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Agenda items number one and two, we just found out prior to the meeting that our financial advisor had a family emergency and will not be able to attend, so we are going to pull these two items and move them to the meeting on the 11th. Is it the 11th?
Yes. May 11th.
On May 11th. With that, so we will move on to agenda item number three, consider and act upon accepting a bid amount of $69,420 for H&amp;G paving contractors incorporated and authorized, and Mayor to sign those for motor park trail, that's all.
Thank you, Mayor Council, Doug Basinger, Community Services Director. This rotary park project is, or this paving part is part of a bigger project of about $80,000. The Rotary Trail was originally built in the 80s, and I think it was resurfaced around 98 or so. State is going to reimburse us 80% of this total project for right around $64,000. So our recommendation is that we accept a bid from H&amp;G paving contractors for $69,420.
This particular area also ties in, at least, is at least adjacent to our trails system in the country.
Yes, it's all part of the, of the trail system.
Doug, do we have experience with this H&amp;G?
Yes, we do, it was on a, it was on a larger project, a really big project, but did a good job. Yeah, we feel comfortable with them on, on this one.
Thanks.
Are we going to put drainage under these, this time?
They are, yes. There's, there's certain points that our engineers has identified that they're going to be putting drainage in there to carry all the water away.
For water it stood before.
Yeah, and it's, it's worn away some, some parts of the trail, so that was identified and it's going to be taken care of with this also.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Take the motion in a second to approve, motion, Councilman Vote Right, second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Why don't you call it, please?
Councilman Vote Right?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
On to agenda item number four, discussion of possible action on approval of certain costs related to the fire department, funds to be used from the City, City McAllister Fire Department's portion in county courts that exercise acts for fire services.
Mayor, Council? Hey, Mayor Council, this evening we're asking to replace some of the furniture of some of our fire stations. We've got two quotes here, Mayor, if I may approach a quick. And I apologize for the mix-up.
Thanks.
In your package you'll find a quote from Vickers Furniture, which is an old quote, it's not accurate. This will be the updated quote. That should have been in your package. As I was saying, we've got two quotes for this furniture, we're asking to replace some mattresses, some recliners, and some mattress covers as well. The quote from Vickers Furniture is the amount of $12,266. Second quote is from Tannehill Furniture, in the amount of $10,228. We're asking to purchase through Tannehill Furniture for the $10,228 amount. And we're asking to fund that from our portion of the department's portion, sales tax.
Nice little quotes in local.
Yes, sir.
Are there any questions or comments? I would take a motion in a second to approve the Tannehill contract, first, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Vote Right, any discussion? Corey, would you call it, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
That right?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
We are on to agenda item number five, consider and act upon authorization, the mayor to sign an agreement with Golden Shovel Agency LLC for marketing and promotional services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is actually a response to the council, a council request for us to look at a overall marketing campaign for the city. We were approached by the council to find a way to market to outsiders, to specifically to try to recruit in remote workers to the area. We spent some time looking at several different firms to see what we, what we think would work best, we came across one, Golden Shovel Agency, who is a economic development marketing, marketing specialist. We actually, the, the proposal you see before you is just for economic development, but we, we spoke to them about the idea of doing an economic development and tourism combined marketing proposal, they said they could easily do both in one, in one contract. What, how this, how this year-long marketing campaign would work is there's two, there's two components to it. If we agree to work with this firm, they would do content generation for us and create weekly, weekly articles that they would push out to the nation that covers whatever, whatever we feel we want to show with, about the community, whether that be economic development in our vacant buildings, our excess utility capacity, or if we wanted to talk more on the tourism side, quality of life, special events, we can really, as, as we go through this marketing campaign, we can customize this to do whatever, whatever we want to do. We feel the price is, is appropriate at $13,200, very affordable for a, for a marketing campaign, and both economic development and tourism, we recommend the city council consider this firm to help us get a marketing campaign off the ground.
Would, would their content that they create, would it be things that we could put on our, our website?
Absolutely, so our, our current website has the capability of actually building in articles that rotate in and out, so you can see them on the homepage. We very easily could put these articles onto the website, and they would be ours for forever.
We're talking about a one-year contract?
Right.
Doing this?
Yes. Now, if it's successful and we want to continue with, we could do it for longer, but this contract is just for one year, just to see how it, see how it works for us.
That's good.
I was wondering, did you get any bids from anybody else on this, Kirk?
Oh, we spoke to three different firms, this was the most applicable to what our needs were, all of the, all of the prices were equivalent between, I think this was actually the lowest and the highest, I think was 16,000, so they're all kind of in the same ballpark.
Where is this place located?
So their home base is out of Minnesota, but they've got people remote working all over the nation, our main contact actually lives in New York. Which coincidentally, I think, would be one of the states we would want to market to.
Maybe not, everybody's leaving.
Well, that's, I think that's what we want. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Mayor, it's Councilman Richard, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, is it, it looks like we're paying for two different things here, we're paying for the 12 months of content management service, but then we're only getting six months of the full suite targeted digital marketing campaign, is, am I reading this correctly?
That is correct, so the, the content generation would be the articles that they write weekly, they would not go to anyone specifically, that would go on our website, anyone could access it, but there would also be six months of a specified campaign. This, that was more of the, in line with what your idea was, with trying to recruit remote workers specifically. It doesn't describe exactly what that would be used, how, how we would tackle that yet, there would have to be a strategy session to, to determine where we actually, where do we want to focus those dollars at and that attention at, and who do we actually want to recruit?
What, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, what's the, what's the thinking behind, you know, one of those services, six months, and one of those services, 12 months?
That was their proposal, they, they thought that a targeting campaign is, is best done under a, a short amount of time and just kind of a big focus on it. If we wanted to do one for longer, we could certainly ask them to extend that out to 12 months at additional cost, but they, they had recommended a six-month targeted campaign.
Okay. So, I, this is a question maybe for the city attorney, but how, when are we going to do this, is it, is this going to be something we'll do in the new fiscal year, or will this begin now, I'm just, I'm curious, because we're talking, you know, in 12 and six-month intervals, and, you know, how will we do that, how will that work?
The idea was to begin immediately.
I mean, I'm, I don't think we can sign an agreement, you know, that would bind this, or can't we sign an agreement that would bind us into the next fiscal year? Well, if you're, if you're obligating the funds now and paying the funds upfront, you can, and so if you're paying as you, as you go, then you probably need to start it at the beginning of the new fiscal year, but as long as you pay the funds this year, the service can run, you know, longer, you're just not obligating funds in the future. Okay, thank you for that. I'm done with my question.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour, this is probably going to be a question for the city attorney, but it'd be on page, what would be page 31, it's not number, the last numbered page is 29. It would be payment for services. The sentence or after the, the highlighted part says, "In addition to the foregoing fees, client agrees to pay any sales use or value-added taxes of any applicable to the services provided hereunder." What does that mean? That's Mr. Urban.
That's a legal question.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah, those, there, there are no sales taxes applicable to the city, and so, I mean, it's, I'm sure it's an artifact from other contracts that they do with private entities, but it's saying if applicable, and they're not.
Okay. And then, this is specifically for you, Mr. Urban, this would be on what would be page number 33, under mediation arbitration.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, where it talks about the agreement is made in Minnesota, governing, considered by the courts, laws of the state of Minnesota, we would want to change that to Oklahoma.
No, we, you know, the, the law governing, I mean, we prefer Oklahoma, but it doesn't really matter, as long as we're not submitting to jurisdiction in Minnesota, it doesn't matter, if they apply, you know, Minnesota law in a court in Oklahoma, they could do that. We, we don't mind the, the contract being interpreted by Minnesota law, which is very similar to our law, we just don't ever agree to be sued in Minnesota.
Answering my questions, does anyone else have any other questions? I will take the motion in a second, motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Vote Right, any further discussion? Corey, would you call it, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
That right?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Yeah, we're still, we're on to agenda item number six, consider and act upon the approval of the Councilor Jobs Program Resolution.
Mayor and Council, this item was brought to you by the lead committee that was established either last year or the year before, I don't remember when we did that, but since they were formed, we've, we've been working with the lead committee on trying to help overcome some of the barriers that we face for the Economic Development Department. There are a variety of issues that we still need to work on, but they wanted to tackle something that would be no cost, at least to implement. One of the issues that we've had is the lack of a formalized incentive policy or program here at the city, we spoke about this before, but when, when we talk to industry, often, more often than not, a question they have is what type of incentives can you provide us? Now, without a formalized incentive policy, we are forced to add a lot of caveats to any answer we give, in the form of, you know, we, we, city staff thinks you'd be eligible for this, but it would require city council approval, obviously language that, that doesn't inspire confidence in the program. What we would like is something that is, that is a, a framework with some parameters on what the city might agree to do, obviously it doesn't hold the city to anything, but it would give us a program to point to when we talk to industry and say, we have something on the books, the council approved this, they're in favor of, of these types of incentives, and would provide a little bit more assurance to industry when we speak to them. That's what this program is, it passed the lead committee yesterday, so.
Just to clarify, what this does, this does not spend anything at all, this gives, Mr. Ridenhour, when a business comes calling, what kind of, what kind of incentives can the city provide, and he said he will have the document he can give them, these are the things that have been discussed by the council and are amenable to providing, they would still have to be voted on by the council, but it keeps him from having to, okay, they want this, can I get this, they want this, can I get this, he's got, he's got something that to work from now with this, and, you know, essentially, from what Mr. Ridenhour has told us is that when a business or entity is wanting to come here, they have a checklist of what they, you know, what they want, this, you know, and incentive program is generally one of them, and the state currently has one, and this one was designed to not compete with the state one, but to complement the state program, and there was a lot of work, we worked on this for, I'd say, probably six months, yeah?
Off and on, yes.
And there's a lot of input from, from the lead committee and the various ways of looking at it, and I think, I personally think it's a very good, very good approach, and I would encourage voting for it. Are there any, any questions?
Mr. Mer, this is Vice Mer.
Go ahead.
On 2A, 2 on new payroll, can you, can you give me some, some of your guys' thought process of why you said $500,000 in new annual payroll, how did you guys come to that number?
That was discussed back and forth through the, through the lead committee, we did have to have a minimum threshold, obviously if, you know, a business is creating two jobs, we probably don't have enough money for every business that does that. We looked at 500,000, if you had, you know, 15 jobs that were paying $35,000 a year, you exceed that threshold, so we wanted something that could capture small to medium-sized projects, but still have a, kind of, sort of a minimum threshold that we adhere to.
Was there any discussion or feelings that maybe we should lower that number at all, or is that the number that was kind of the breaking point, that they thought that this was worth discussing?
I don't know if the lead committee was okay with that number.
It was, it was, there was discussion, and it's, it is, the, it was discussed that creating a couple of jobs is not, is, while it's a good thing for the city, it's, it's not the intent of an incentive program. It was more designed towards companies that are going to hire, they're, they're, you know, definitely be small companies, but, you know, we're, we're talking 10 to 20, 25, and anything, you know, we certainly would be more than happy for anything bigger than that, but the most, the most likely attraction we have, we've felt, were within that, that range of companies.
Thank you.
I, I would point out quickly, I mean, even if the council does promote this and approve it, it doesn't limit your ability to do other things, even if someone came that was creating fewer jobs that could.
But that just something we should raise, we could maybe.
Oh, absolutely.
Councilman Smith?
Kirk, tell me about 3BIs, how does that work? How's that prorated, and how, what does that mean?
Sure, so the idea, there's, there's three different types of incentives in this program, one is the donation of property, which is pretty straightforward, the other one, the performance incentive is a more traditional incentive, where if we have someone come forward that's wanting to create jobs, they would state how many jobs they intend to create, and we would pass an incentive agreement based upon the number of jobs they create. So as they start, and they start creating payroll, they'll submit annual reports to us that demonstrate what their total payroll is. If they do not meet their requirements, let's say they want to create 50 jobs and they only end up creating 40, well, maybe we prorate that incentive based upon the number of jobs that they do end up creating.
How do you decide what the incentive would be, the case?
We'd do that upfront, and it's based upon, that would have to be upfront, what we have here in this program is 5% of annual payroll, would be the total, would be the total incentive.
It would be, it would be similar to deal we had made. It's not quite the same thing, but with, with Krebs Brewing, where they pay a monthly amount, but at the end of a certain period, they buy the entire building, we will just set it at cost. That is on market level.
This, on our 500,000, our payroll, we're talking 25,000 is the maximum we would ever give as an incentive. And we base that on what, what they just want, you're saying we put it in the agreement originally, so would that just be an automatic thing, if they did come up to their, their estimate of what the payroll would be, they would get that financial incentive?
Correct, as they, as they met their employment goals, they would be eligible for the incentive.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Mayor, Councilman Richard, I have a comment, more than a question.
Thank you. I think that, where are we at here? The new payroll number in two, two AI of this, I think instead of being a number, it should be a number of jobs at something, I don't know, maybe 100% of the average county wage, something like that. I just say that because I don't know, you know, I don't know if we ever do this, or how long we will do it for, but, you know, over time, that $500,000 number is, you know, is going to change with inflation, hopefully with inflation. So I think we'd be smart to, instead of saying a dollar number, say the number of jobs we're targeting, and again, some wage metric. I think average county wage works pretty good there. And I would like to see it be a little lower personally. I think I certainly hope that the lead committee is doing stuff like this, but has also got to focus on early stage or startup organizations. And certainly, some of those are going to start up big, but some of them are going to start up smaller. So I would like to see something that I think, I think I heard that this $500,000 number was was the idea, was that was that was kind of a stand-in for 15 jobs. Is that correct? 15 jobs?
We had looked at, you know, what what would a smaller project look like and how much payroll would they have to generate to qualify? And we thought that 15 jobs at $35,000 a year, which exceeds that $500,000 threshold, would be a good would be a good project for for the community. We didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that we didn't exclude projects of that size.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I mean, a project of that size would be good, but I just, I, when I think of the lead committee, I think of it as as it's this local economic development thing, but it's also this idea of it's going to, it's going to create growth or incentivize growth or encourage growth of early stage and startup organizations. And I think that is too big of a burden for a lot of startup organizations. Now, I could see it, you know, I think you said two jobs, not wanting to do two jobs, but I think somewhere between two and 15 is better. I personally think somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe five jobs is worth it. You know, again, with the idea that we're going to help people potentially get started, and then that business really takes off and grows. And so I'm just, those are my comments on the initiative. But with that being said, I'm certainly glad to see this come out of the lead committee, and it sounds like they put a lot of a lot of work into it. And I'm just offering a few few thoughts here at the last moment.
What what is the, yeah, what is the threshold on the Quality Jobs Act?
So for quality jobs, it's actually how Councilman Pritchard described it. It's there really isn't a lower bound. I actually think it is 30 might be the lower bound, but it requires you to meet average county wage, 110% of average county wage. Unfortunately for us, we do have a substantial number of higher paying jobs in the county, thanks in large part to the base. Last time I checked, that average wage household income was in the 50s. So that does create difficulty for a project that doesn't pay quite that scale, but would still be a benefit to the community. So I don't know that we want to mirror how the state tackles that entirely.
Well.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, we could do, I mean, we don't, I'm not advocating that we do 110% of the county wage, but we could do, we could do less than the county wage, which won't look good in the paper. But, you know, just the idea of creating some movable target, you know, as the as wages move with inflation, so that our number over time stays relevant. And maybe I'm too concerned about this, but I've just lately, I've been very concerned about inflation and what wages are going to look like even a year or two from now. I think that I think that they may, I don't know, I think that we just put so much money into the economy with a COVID stimulus that, you know, $500,000 in a couple of years may be not $500,000 today.
It is, it is something we could always have in the future, and when it is, if inflation does rise, and adjust that number. So, I mean, it's it's not ideal, but that that's a possibility.
Would it be feasible to have a minimum of 500,000, at least 15 jobs?
We obviously can make it whatever, whatever the council recommends, but the only thing with that is what if you have a project? Because there's two things here. There's the number of jobs, but there's also how much they pay those jobs, how much they pay those employees. So if we had someone that created 10 jobs at a much higher wage, I still think that would be something that would benefit the community. It's this balancing of, you know, either you're creating jobs or you're creating a lot of, maybe fewer jobs with higher payroll. And I don't want to say, you know, you have to fit into one or one or either of those boxes. If you're hitting either one of those, it's good for the community.
Mayor, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Smith, were you finished?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Stephen.
Would there would there be, I mean, anytime that we go through this process and do this, we would have to approve any kind of allocation of funds, correct? Am I understanding that?
Yes, yes, this doesn't bypass that process.
Okay, so if if we did change the wording to include, and I'm just offering a few comments here. So if we didn't, instead of just doing the $500,000 payroll, but we actually set a minimum of, you know, 10 jobs, five jobs, or half a million dollars an annual, you know, and/or half a million dollars in new annual payroll within 24 months from the date of agreement to qualify for the award, what would be the downside if we have the ultimate approval power on that?
And just more projects coming to the lead committee that may or may not be what the community is looking for. I mean, it's, you have to set that number or something. And the lower it is, the more people come forward with projects that may not match the intention of the program.
I got you. Well, this is just maybe my thought process when we created the lead, and maybe, maybe I'm not remembering it correctly, because I don't remember things the best sometimes. But it seems like we were doing this, right? And it's even in here, and the lead committee has done a wonderful job with this, like encouraging growth in our locally right now. So it seems like to me, if we could get somebody that, if we could even get smaller projects that maybe would miss the scope of what you typically deal with, Mr. Wright, now, on the smaller scale in front of the lead committee, it seems like we might be able to grow some stuff that maybe we wouldn't normally see. So I would be favorable to changing the language to a minimum of 10 jobs or and/or $500,000 in new annual payroll, just to get some more projects. And if we realize that's too small than that, we can always remove some language. So I mean, that's, I would be favorable to that language change if others were to be open to it as well.
I have an idea as well. See what you think on this. The the average non-uniformed city employee wage is right at right at $35,000. So if we made it 10 jobs at the average of, 100% of the average of city employee, non-uniformed city employee pay, that gives us a moving number, because our employees are basically get a cost of living each year as well. So that that would give us, help us with the inflationary part of it, and not have a specific number in there that we would have to readdress in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if you put that in a motion, I would second.
Say that again, John.
It would be at least, at least 10 jobs at 100% of the city of McAllister non-uniformed employee average pay.
So it lowers it right down to 350,000 minimum?
Yes.
What do you say?
Whatever the council wants.
Yeah.
I think that's still, I think that's still a good minimum number. It, we will probably see more projects that the lead committee will pass on, but that's just, that's nature of it.
Okay, well, I will make that as a motion then. And Council vote right seconds. Is there any further discussion? George Colorado, please.
Councilman Boatwright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number seven, consider an act upon building demolition and site contracts with M.A.S., businesses, M.A.S. trucking, and a sum of $16,380.
Good evening, council. These demolition bids were accepted and opened on April 20th. This will be for 319 West Adams, 821 East Delaware, and then I had added 1103 North Second from our previous bid opening to utilize the funds that I have available for this procedure.
Thank you very much for meeting. Are there any questions or comments? I'll take a motion in second to approve motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Vote Wright. Any further discussion? George Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Boatwright?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Same.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number eight, consider an act upon an ordinance, Maryland Council City Code, Chapter Six, alcoholic and non-intoxicating beverages, Article Five, beverage gardens, Section Six dash one nine two, beverage garden permit, refilling all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability.
This change is just to make it where the permits can be approved administratively rather than having to bring it to council, because it would make it difficult for someone to maybe meet those dates with the way the council meetings fall. So this is just a change to make that where it's easier for someone to get those permits done.
Change any rules?
No.
Are there any questions? Take the motion second, motion, Councilman Smith. Yes, go ahead.
I think we should, and Section D of the ordinance, I think we should strike non-intoxicating and/or intoxicating, and replace that with the word alcoholic beverages. I say this, we really should, we really should probably revise the whole alcoholic beverage section of our ordinances. But since the laws changed, state law, 2018, non-intoxicating or intoxicating beverages, those terms are no longer part of Oklahoma law, and they've been replaced by alcoholic beverages. I would make a motion that we adopt this with striking non-intoxicating and/or intoxicating, and replacing that with alcoholic beverages in Section D.
We've already had a motion and a second. Would you make that as an amendment?
Yes.
Councilman Smith made the motion. Then, Mr. Urban, run me through one more time how we we vote to accept the amendment and then vote on on it as amended, or do we just vote on it as amended?
You can just vote on it as amended.
Any further discussion? George Colorado, please.
Councilman Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Boatwright?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to agenda item number nine, consider an act upon approval of a resolution setting a special election election date for vacancy and work for council seat and authorize the mayor to issue a proclamation for special election. Obviously, our four quarters, we declared it vacant. This is just setting the date for the election. In case anybody has read that in items, I think it was item two, where we had talked about an election in the future on the water project, it would be set for July. The reason that this isn't set for July is state law. If the state does not allow candidate elections on that same day, it's questions only. So that's why this, that's why this is September, and that would have been July, or would be July, if when we pass it. So are there any any questions or comments? I take a motion in second to approve motion, Councilman Smith, that Councilman Vote Wright. Any discussion? George Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Boatwright?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number 10, discussion on monthly financial update. Mr. Swift?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight in your packet, as usual, we have your financial summary. This ends as of March of 2021, which is concludes 75% of our year of our year. On your first report, you have the general fund at a glance, revenue standard 81.11%, which is 6.11% over budget. Expenses are 71.43%, which is 3.57% under budget. Below that is our MPWA revenue standing at 86.15%, which is 11.15% over our budget. Expenses are 70.33%, which is 4.67% under budget. The next graph that you have is your general fund, sales tax revenue for the month of April. We reported 577,309, which puts us 61,284 under last month, 39,973 under last year. However, it still puts us at 44,304 under budget.
And I'm not particularly one, that could definitely be a timing issue when you look at the month before.
Most definitely. Yes, yes, the receipts that have been received. But the state of Oklahoma did indicate that they seen that same fluctuation as well. So with 10 months reporting thus far, sales tax has exceeded our budget that we had for the fiscal year. Your next graph is your use tax revenue for the month of April. Here, we're reporting 109,145 received. This puts us $3,712 under last month, but 8,817 over last year. For year thus far, the 10 months reporting, the use tax still falls about $666,000 under budget. Your next graph, you'll find your MPWA water sales revenue. At the top, you have revenue, excuse me, residence and commercial water sales reporting through the through March. It is one of our highest months in the past few years. But it also includes billing for the water leaks that were caused by our ice and storm, snowstorm that we had in February. So we shouldn't, we don't see that. Same way with districts and wholesale water cells have been stayed pretty steady. But again, as mentioned, the this includes that billing for them as well.
So so April, especially on the residence, commercial, we could actually see it compliant because of the adjustments that were.
Yeah, we've had quite a few adjustments that have come through and for city manager and assistant city manager for leak adjustments and the requirements that are needed for that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
These are, I think I asked this last month, I can't remember. These figures are in, these are in dollars, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Finally, your last report is your treasury report reflects our cash on hand for our accounts.
Any questions? Thank you. On to agenda item number 11, presentation and discussion of fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. twenty-two budget.
Oh, don't do that.
Budget for any projection.
Yes, we did. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm here tonight to present the preliminary budget for the city of McAllister. There will be budget hearings and, and public hearings on the budget as we proceed through this process. It does have to be voted on seven days prior to the end of the current year, so we are moving through this process. We've got plenty of time for questions and discussions and anything that the council wishes to discuss in the budget. First thing I want to mention is what a difference a year makes. Last year at this time, we were trying to figure out what was happening at the beginning of a pandemic and what was going to happen to, happen to our revenues with all of the businesses shutting down and the world just turning upside down. This year, a year later, we're trying to figure out at what level of normalcy will we be coming back to? So what we've had to do is we've had to look and, and rely more on the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget because last, the current year's budget was anomaly in our, in our opinion. So as, as always, the budget does provide for a balanced budget. We are required to do that by law for revenues and expenditures, and it meets the requirement of maintaining a minimum reserve of ten percent in our emergency fund. So let's talk about the revenue side of, of the budget first and foremost, and you know, we, we had to amend this year's budget numerous times in order to reflect the process that we went through. You know, at one time, we were down about seventy employees through furloughs and different retirements, those types of things that went on here at the city. Most of those people have now been hired back. So what we are doing is we are focusing more on nineteen twenty and looking at that budget, and we are projecting for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two approximately eight point two million dollars in sales tax revenue. Keep in mind, this is the two percent, it is not the entire three and a half percent that is collected by the city. This is just the two percent of unrestricted sales tax that we operate on. So a couple of things that we had to take into account is we were looking at the opening of the new shopping center in February, we did not take into account any of the sales tax projected for that shopping center. If you remember the agreement that we have with the developers for the shops at McAllister, ninety percent of that sales tax goes to the developer up to, for five years or the first five and a half million dollars, ten percent does come to the city, but we do not know at this time what that number will look like, so we did not put it in any of our projections. So I talked about a minute ago, you know, our original budget for this year was six point seven million dollars due to the anticipated decrease. Projected, we, we project the year to end at about eight point two, two-five million, and for the proposed budget going forward, we are being very conservative and estimating that to be at eight point two million, eight point two four-five million in sales tax revenue. Our use tax, the original budget was for two point three, almost two point four million dollars. And if you remember, we had budgeted an additional six hundred thousand dollars in use tax for construction materials for the shops in McAllister. If you go out there and look at where the shops in McAllister are today, they've done a lot of work with concrete work, they're getting ready to tilt up the walls, but that is not the construction materials that it takes to build that shopping center. They were delayed, we've gone through this process numerous times. The shops that are, are going to be in the center were delayed up to six months just through the rotation of the pandemic. They are back in line and everything is scheduled to open at that shopping center in February of twenty-two, March, February of two thousand twenty-two. So in our projection and our proposed budget going forward, we did budget three hundred thousand dollars in use tax for materials at the shops in McAllister. We anticipate that to happen after July one of this year. Our annual use tax, you can see how, how it's budgeted, just like I talked about, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, we did not reach that budget due to the use tax in the shops in McAllister not reading, reaching their projected timeframe. Here's the breakdown of how are, how we spend our money in our departmental expenditures. So talk about public works for a second, which is our streets, facility maintenance, safety and traffic control. We are continuing to look for a public works director. I have some good news, we have an interview this week of an individual that we think is highly qualified for the job, and we will be discussing this later in the week with him in interviewing, so there is an opportunity which we have, we've been having trouble enticing people to come and take a look at that job and who qualify for that job. One of the things that we are proposing in the streets department moving forward is to move traffic control under our safety department. The two of them work very closely together, especially when you're working on the streets, when you're coring off traffic lanes, those type of things, so I think those two departments, safety and traffic control will work very well together. Our community services department, this is our parks and recreation. We are going to be opening the Jeff Lee pool this year, we do not anticipate opening the stike pool, but we will have the Jeff Lee pool open for the public and hopefully have it manned and operated for the entire summer. We've had problems in the past with our lifeguards and not being able to make it through the summer, so we're going to look at staffing the one pool and, and staffing it a little heavier. We are contracting our mowing on the highways, so we're looking at highway sixty-nine bypass, highway two seventy out to Indian Nation Turnpike, and also Business sixty-nine. Council approved those contracts in the past, and we are going to be having those contractors mow those highways for us, which is going to allow our parks and recreation department to spend more time focusing on our park systems and, and the other areas and keeping up the mowing in those areas. The cemetery, one of the problems that we face in the upcoming year is for over a year now, we have not been able to get inmates either through Jackie Brandon. We've been able to get a few inmates periodically through the county. We do not anticipate that changing. So a couple of things that we've done this year is with all of the new equipment that we have, we feel that we're going to be much more productive, but also in our cemetery department, we are going to, we have budgeted for three individuals through an employment agency. We did that last year and it worked out very well for us, and keep them through the mowing season. And that's how we plan on taking care of our cemeteries and any additional parks work that needs to be accomplished, so we have handled that through, through an employment agency. In our administration and planning department, one of the things I want to bring here attention is we've discussed this several times in the past, our grant writer has been extremely successful. With that success has made her extremely busy, not only on the grant writing side, but also on the administrative side. So going forward, we are not going to be, we are going to be taking the public information side of her job description away so that she can folk, focus entirely on the administration of the grants and the writing of the grants going forward. We are actually talking to a public information firm out of Tulsa to help us with the PIO here at the city of McAllister, and we'll be bringing that recommendation to you in the near future. In our legal department, I think everybody's aware that our city attorney, after thirteen years, has tendered his resignation, and part of that is a paralegal that is budgeted for that department. As we move forward, looking at a part, part-time city attorney, we're going to look for hopefully one that has a paralegal in their department also that we can contract, contract with, that will be able to do the paralegal work and work side by side with our city attorney. In our police department, our police department is being funded just like it has in the past, it has, including E nine one one, has sixty-two people in the department as it has in the past. We have one animal control budgeted, forty-seven police officers. We have forty-one police officers, which includes the chief, the assistant chief, animal control and administration. We have six budgeted in our criminal investigation department and one evidence technician for a total, including nine one one, of sixty-two individuals in our police department. In our fire department, we have forty firefighters plus our chief, assistant chief and administration for a total of forty-three, the same that we've had in the past also. One thing that I would do want to say about this budget is we have been able in this budget to meet the needs of our department heads and have not had to cut the materials and supply requests for any of the departments moving forward, which is, I believe, a first since I've been here, that we've been able to meet all of those needs, so the materials and supplies should be in the budgets as requested for all of our employees to be able to do their work going forward. You can see the breakdown of how the money is spent in the general fund. Our projected revenues for the MPWA fund, McAllister Public Works Association. If you look at the breakdown, our water sales, we are anticipating about a twelve percent increase in our water sales, this is due to meter change outs and just being more efficient and being able to read those meters and get those meters changed out in a more timely manner, and our water sales are up. Our district water sales are up tremendously, we are anticipating about a seventy-two percent increase in our district water sales. This has to do with the rate increases that we passed on and also with the changing out of those master meters as we get those changed out and being, being able to rely more steadily on good readings with those new master meters. Our sewer costs for the proposed budget, one point seven million dollars, garbage, two point nine million dollars, and other, for a total of ten million four hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. This is how we're going to spend the MPWA funding, refuse collection, I do want to point out that refuge collection and water treatment per contract will both be increased by three and a half percent, and this was built into the multi-year contracts that council has approved in the past, so our estimated cost for our refuge collection, two point one million dollars, almost two point two, wastewater treatment is eight hundred and five, utility maintenance one point one, water treatment one point four, utility billing, engineering and landfill makes up the rest of it. So how do we spend the rest of the sales tax? We've kind of gone over what, what money we'll receive on the two percent unrestricted, so what happens to the, the restricted funds? As everybody's aware, we have bond payments that are doing payable, those bond payments are estimated to be four point six million dollars in the upcoming year. The one cent dedicated sales tax for that fund will generate about four point one million dollars, which leaves us short five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars that will have to be made up through the general fund. So as you can see, since we refinanced the bonds and, and got those lower interest rates and have been working forward each year, we, because our sales tax has not reached our projections, we have had to subsidize those bond payments going forward, so these are all bonds that were set up originally in, in the late nineteen hundreds, they do not go away until early thirty, twenty thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, right around in that area, so. We are continuing to move towards getting these bond payments taken care of, but it's going to take many, many more years to get through this process.
Just to clarify something for the public. We're not missing any bond payment, there's, we have a triple A rating and it's, it's, the only thing that's different is the sales, the dedicated sales tax isn't making it up, so we're, we're paying it up in the WA.
That is correct, that's. So take a few minutes to talk about our personnel and our benefits associated with our city employees. I think everybody's aware that by law, we're required to contribute fourteen percent to the fire pension for each one of our employees based on their salary, thirteen percent for the police pension, and our non-uniform employees receive a defined contribution plan of two percent, and then the city matches fifty percent up to the first three thousand dollars on any contributions they make. So I want to talk about.
What's that fire percentage, the, like, fire pension, fourteen percent of what, their salary?
Of their salary, yes, including overtime. So our benefits for the upcoming year, we don't anticipate any changes. I have some really good news because of our experience rating with our health, health insurance plan through Blue Cross Blue Shield, our, our claims are, are down substantially, and we are going to see a ten percent reduction in our healthcare plan for the upcoming year, and we're also going to receive a one-time wellness benefit of a credit of sixty-three thousand dollars on our first bill. That works out to be about a fourteen to fifteen percent decrease in health insurance costs for the upcoming year. That's kind of unheard, heard of nationwide for, for an organization to have a decrease, but we have done very, very well in maintaining our, our benefits and, and managing that, and our, and our employees are healthy, healthier, so that's a good thing. In the, in the payroll for this upcoming year, we have been able to also maintain all of the benefits moving forward, those benefits are to include, we have budgeted a two percent Those benefits are to include, we have budgeted a two percent cost of living increase for all employees. And I say all employees, fire police and all non-uniform employees. We will continue with our merit system for the upcoming year, which gives everybody an annual evaluation and opportunity for a merit increase. We are continuing the longevity program, the clothing allowance program and the safety award program. Safety award program was something that we put in place a little over a year ago. And has turned out to be a very good program for the city. So what does our employment levels look like on the upcoming year? As you can see, the first column, our full-time equivalent employees for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty was two hundred and twenty-five employees. And then the pandemic hit in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one and our employment level dropped to about a hundred and seventy. It actually got a little bit lower than that. Through all of the budget amendments and the budget appropriations, as we saw our sales tax can continue to come back. We amended the budget and it will end up the year with about two hundred thirteen employees. And our proposed budget for the upcoming year is for two hundred and twenty-seven employees. So we're back to full strength and we're adding a couple of positions. And I want to go over what we're, what we're moving because if you look at administration from thirty-five full-time and nineteen twenty down to thirty-two. If you look at police and fire, they remain the same. Our community services department is dropping three. Public works is drop, is, is gaining six employees and our public utilities are gaining two employees. So what we're doing here is we have eliminated a cashier at the utility billing office. We have eliminated a floater position. A supervisor's position to expo administration. And a facility maintenance worker. This has allowed us to move three additional employees into our U T M department. Which will be working on, there'll be a construction crew that'll be working in the neighborhoods. Doing new construction or replacing existing lines that are, we know are bad. And these would be for, you know, maybe three, four hundred feet long. That give us problems in the neighborhood. So that crew would be a construction crew. And then like an additional three street workers for our public works department. It's a change. It's, it's a difference and we are moving in that direction. People worry about community services, community services is being taken care of by employment, employment contract people that work just during the periods of time that we need them. And that is mainly in the summertime for our recreational programs and our, and our mowing programs. So we're not really losing anybody. We're just utilizing part-time employees to take care of those needs. So it's, it's a difference. It's adding a few people. One of the persons that we are recommending to be added is to economic development. I don't know if that will come to be because we've had some changes there. And the idea that we had isn't really coming to fruition at this moment. But this is a preliminary budget. We're just giving you our ideas. We're also eliminating one person in our, well, we had a part-time nutrition worker that has gone to full-time. Those are the main changes for the employment levels of the city. Wanted to give you an idea of some of our other departments and our other funds. Something that we talk about continually. And I, you know, I, this continues to cost more and more of these programs every year and we've received less and less funding. At one time, the nutrition program was funded with about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars twenty years ago and the city put in about forty thousand dollars for that program. As you can see, it has changed every year. And has, has flipped the opposite direction. Now the revenues received for the nutrition programs about forty-six thousand. The expenditures now are three hundred and eighteen thousand. And that's to feed a hundred to a hundred and fifty seniors on a daily basis, whether we're delivering meals. Or whether we go back to delivering and in-person feeding of people at the Stipe Center. But you can see this is, this is expensive. It's three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Our airport fund revenues about ninety-three thousand from our hangars and those type of items, our expenditure is about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. One good thing is we did receive a twenty-three thousand dollar cares grant for materials and supplies that can't be used for payroll, but it can be used for materials and supplies that are needed out at the airport. So that helps a little bit. Our E nine one one, for the first time ever. Our expenditures outweigh our revenues. In the past, we have had a balance moving forward. We no longer have that balance since we built a new facility over at the Carl Albert. Building and for the first year, we have to now fund this department to the tune of about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars per year. What's happening to this is a lot of people are disconnecting their home phones. And we no longer receive that. So they've gone from a home phone and a cell phone to now just a cell phone. And that's where we're seeing the, the reduction in our reimbursements on that. The last item is the expo anticipating about sixty thousand dollars in revenues. We have a fund balance about a hundred and fifty thousand and our expenditures are anticipated to be around four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We are currently down two positions at the expo. We have not filled those positions and we're evaluating how we proceed with that facility going forward. We're going to make sure that what the council's desire and what the citizens desire is how they want to proceed with that expo. We're currently talking to the county commissioners and we are having discussions currently on, on the expo. So our capital budget for the upcoming year. One of the things we've been trying to get accomplished around here is a new fire truck. All three of our fire engines are at least twenty-five years old. As you can imagine with equipment, that type of equipment, we're seeing a lot of mechanical failures, a lot of mechanical breakdowns. We're spending a tremendous amount of money keeping these machines running. Our ladder truck is now chief, how many years is our? Okay, so we're almost at twenty years on our ladder truck. And this stuff is really starting to show its age. So with this upcoming budget, we have, we have budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year. We're going to appropriate that going forward. We want to match that with some of the county quarter cent sales tax money. And then we want to finance the rest of that fire truck, but that fire truck is going to cost about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But this is the year that we need to start looking at this equipment. And moving, and moving this equipment forward. It's time. So that's about a five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure. The rest of these are mainly payments, the great all, which was approved by the council at the last council meeting. Payments are fifty-four thousand dollars a year. We have a contingency in case something breaks down and we need some items. The patrol cars, those are four chargers that were purchased last year. Costs twenty-two thousand dollars a year, fleet maintenance truck. That's one truck, fifty-eight hundred. Our M C C controls at the water treatment plant. This is the electrical panel, panels that we replaced five years ago. This is the last year of those payments. And those controls will actually be paid off in February of twenty-two. So that fifty-six thousand dollar payment will be going away in the future. Our water tower projects, this is maintenance of all of our water towers in the city. This is the cleaning, making sure that the operation is, is well, it's, it's, it's just taking care of these things. And painting the outside on a rotation, I think every five years, something like that. So this is a program that we've had in place now for about ten years. And it's keeping our towers in pristine condition and operating very, very well. Our streets department and U T M dump trucks, those were purchased a couple of years ago. Cost of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars a year in payments. Our new landfill roll-off truck that was acquired about three months ago. As you can see, it's thirty-six thousand. Two years ago, council approved us to purchase twenty-one fleet vehicles, which was a combination of police cars. And trucks for the city. And that payment is one fifty-five. And then our Clearwell project, which we borrowed and just completed last week. And I'm pleased to tell you that that Clearwell, both sides have been disinfected. It is past inspection and it is currently in full operation. So we have an additional one million gallons of water stored at our water treatment plant for our citizens here in McAllister.
So that means two of the, two of the Clearwells are in operation?
Both, both Clearwells, yes sir.
Still have one that's?
No, we only have two Clearwells.
Okay.
And they're each a million gallons.
They're the clarifiers.
The clarifiers.
Okay.
Okay. So we got a lot of payments, but we've got a lot of equipment purchased and taken care of and a lot of needs that have been accomplished over the last couple of years. Our stormwater. Talk briefly about that. We're anticipating about three hundred thousand dollars to be used in canal wall stabilization. As everybody's aware, when those walls fall. They're about a thousand dollars a foot, foot back up and they usually fall in about a hundred foot sections. We have been very successful embracing those walls. And, and really being proactive in securing those walls. And I mean, I S G has been instrumental in helping us with that engineering. And being able to help us through that process. So we've got a lot of maintenance that needs to be done and this is the year coming up to do that. Our street sweeper payments are about thirty-nine thousand. We have stormwater projects of a million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Give you a quick rundown of those projects. We currently have the Sonya Way Storm Drain System in progress. That's about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We have a project that's being designed by Meachack currently at Main and Electric. That Quick Stop or Handy Stop or Convenience Store on that corner has been purchased. It's been remodeled and redone. And it's the perfect time to take care of that drainage problem. What's happened there is that drainings comes down off of that hill. Goes in front of Napa and crosses through the parking lot of that convenience store. And we're pushing that water right in, right, right, right in front of their front door. Our intent is to go around that store underground and be able to move that water into the canal on Electric Street. So it's a big project that it needs to happen. And it's a perfect timing with the, with them taking care of that remodel at the, at the convenience store. We also have a project being designed at Hickory and Brewer. It's an extremely flat area. Trying to move water out of that area is very difficult. And we've got a lot of flooding problems in that area and it's affecting the homeownership in that area. So that project's about two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And then we have Fourteenth Street on the opposite side of the shopping center at Walnut Grove. That driveway at Walnut Grove, the head walls that protect that driveway have deteriorated and we've actually got half of that driveway shut down. And then where it goes underneath the road and dumps into the pond by the by those townhouses, that is undersized also. So it is our intent to go in there and solve the drainage problem coming from the frontage road underneath the driveway to Walnut Grove and then underneath the road system to get it into the ponds by the townhouses. That's about four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So those are the, really the three or four major projects that we're going to be getting accomplished. And in production with the stormwater projects, this has all been through the stormwater committee. And they're all on board with it. And then we have numerous just maintenance issues around the community that we'll be addressing. So our infrastructure fund, which is our half cent that the citizens voted on and gave us several years ago. We anticipate that to generate in the upcoming year about two point three million dollars. We're going to be looking at a lot of facility improvements. If you've looked at this building, just this building. It probably hasn't been painted in twenty years. It's deteriorating rapidly outside. There's a lot of issues inside. We've got some issues in the basements that have to be taken care of. We've also got, that takes care of this building. We've got some issues up at our library that we need to address. A lot of, a lot of roof problems. We have a roof problem at the airport with our terminal and also the old C I D building and the F A A building at the airport. We need to be addressing those and looking at those situations also. So facilities, we're going to have to spend some money on our facilities in the upcoming year. We've set aside a half a million dollars for street sidewalk construction. These are new construction projects. Seventy-five thousand dollars for a concrete panel replacement. If you've driven out on Strong, coming from Electric, you know, we've been out there for several months. Replacing panels and it will be our goal to take up that project again in the fall. And finish that concrete panel replacement on Strong Boulevard. Crack ceiling project, which has not been identified yet, but it's desperately needed. Rehab of our sewer plants. We have an issue right now in our east sewer plant with the five million gallon pond storage. That liner, the, the lines that pond is cracking and coming apart on us. We need to take care of that. We need to drain that pond. We need to clean it. We need to replace that liner and, and the apertures associated with it. But in order to do that, we have to have a pond available to us in order to move that overflow liquids into another pond. We have a three million gallon pond adjacent to it that has not been used since I've been here. And it will be our goal to get that one up and running in order to take care of, be able to take care of our five million gallon pond. We have three hundred thousand dollars set aside for that rehab program. I talked to the engineers today and because of the piping and the work that has to go on with the three million gallon pond to get it up to speed. This project is probably looking at more, more like a half a million dollars. So we'll be looking at how to fund the additional two hundred thousand dollars in the future.
That's part of this odors that just go around because of leakage.
The odor?
Plant?
No.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of odor it coming into that area. Into the new housing addition over there.
Are you saying odor?
Odor.
Odor.
Smell.
Yeah, we're, we're addressing that. That has a, that's a chemical thing and, and George Mark Angeli is, is looking.
Working on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand dollars for a lift station. We have two lift stations that are in desperate need. One's out at the Steven Taylor Industrial Park. Which needs to be changed out to a not chrome, but corrosive resistant lift station. We also have the K F C station down on the highway. This will probably only take care of one of those stations. So we'll do the one that's most critical. Our second water source, we're still working towards that project. I believe that the electrical is, is being installed in that as we speak. Or it's in line to be installed. And we continue to work on that project for a secondary water source. We have two hundred thousand dollars set aside for water, water line replacement, three hundred and fifty thousand for sewer line replacement. And a contingency account of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will probably go towards the rehab of the sewer. That's becoming a very critical item for our future. That's a lot of information. We will. We will come back and discuss anything, any questions that anybody has. If you have questions as you're working on this in the next couple of of weeks, please email them to me so whether we can get them addressed and any thoughts that you might have. We're here to help you at this point. We've spent, you know, I've got, I got to thank Sherry Swift, Tony Urban, Kara, all of the department heads. I mean, this has been a project to this point of about two months is what it takes to put all this information together. And it's our thoughts and our ideas. You've had a half hour here to look at it and in your packet for a couple of days. So please take the time, look at it, ask questions, and we're here to help you any way that we can.
Thank you for putting together what's still a fairly conservative budget. Hopefully, we will be making a lot of budget amendments.
The positive. Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're on to agenda item number 12. Consider an act upon a resolution to adopt the capital improvement program. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Mayor and members of the council, we've been going through the capital program with you for several months now. We've met the requirements of our public hearings. We are now on schedule to adopt the resolution, adopting the five-year capital program for the city of McAllister. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Are there any questions or comments? They take a motion to second to approve the capital, motion counsel both facts from the captain Smith. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to new business. Any matter not known or which could not have been recently forced to expire during time imposed in the agenda according to section 311.9, statute 25 of Oklahoma State.
Mayor Council, the only thing I have for you tonight is I'm pleased to inform you that last week we deployed all of the new body cams for our police officers. Out of all of our police officers, we have two that are at fleet for training and one other individual lives on vacation. But all officers have been trained in the use of the new body cams and they are currently wearing them. To give you a recap, it's been a while since we've gone through this. This was a $110,000 program that our granted rider was able to get a grant, the amount of $46,000, which greatly reduced the overall cost and was able to put these body cams on our police officers and also helped tremendously.
We will go to marks increase by city council. Counsel Richard.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
I meant to ask this to the city manager a minute ago, but when you were preparing the budget, did you do any modeling on what a potential increase in the minimum wage would do to our our labor costs or at the city?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. And I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead. If I could. You know, I, the conversations that I'm aware of is the minimum wage would go to $15 an hour. That's all the information I've seen. If you look at the bulk of our employees, I think our lowest wage, and Sherry, correct me if I if you would, is about $12.40 an hour. So yeah, you could have, it could have an effect on us and it is definitely something that you brought to our attention. And we will model that for the future and bring that back to the next meeting.
Thank you. Secondly, you may you may have said this when you're talking about the community services, but but will there be money in the new budget to have workers to open the Stipe Center back on the weekends?
That's for our recreation department and we are bringing back all the programs that we we have had in the past. So it will be our intent to have those facilities open like we have in the past.
All right, thank you. I have two more. One, is there, are there plans to treat the weeds in Harvest Park?
Councilman, I asked that question yesterday and I believe they were treated yesterday.
Okay, thank you. And then this is a, I guess, a question to to either you or to the rest of the the city council. What is our plan or is there a plan in terms of looking for and then hiring a new city attorney?
Councilman, we've been out advertising for that position. That is a part-time position. We are also looking to for a part-time city attorney that hopefully has a paralegal associated with them. But we have advertised for that position and we are in the process currently of receiving resumes. And I can tell you, we now have three interested local attorneys in that position. That will be brought to the council because that is your employee to hire.
When when do you anticipate bringing that before the council?
Oh, Councilman, I'll have to see what the closing date is on that announcement. And once that closing date is announced, then I'll get all that information to you. It should be coming up pretty soon.
Okay, thank you.
All my questions.
The process on that will be, once the the application period is closed, we will, we we as a council will interview the candidates. And depending on how many that is, you know, we may winnow it down to a smaller number and do a second round of interviews. Or if it's a small number to begin with, we may make our choice from there. But we, we will start setting up a an interview process soon as, as soon as we know the closing date. We know the closing date?
I don't.
So we will, we will set it, we will, we will probably do it as a special meeting because the amount of time it will take. Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yeah, I do have one. A while back, and I can't remember, I I have lost the memory on it. But can you tell me if we ever got set up the process of going through if somebody gets a court fine or a fee? If they, if we have like a work opportunity program to pay it back that way? Did we ever get that set up?
Yes.
We did?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, the process is to request that through the court clerk and she will assist those individuals in setting that up.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
We'll move to Mayor's comments. We received a received a card from constituents. Says, Dear Mayor, I would like to commend the city employee Virgil. I didn't hear his last name. He wanted, we wanted to purchase our burial plots. His professionalism was outstanding. His competence included the following, knowing the lay of the land, available plots, prices and documentation of purchase. His expertise made this serious decision into a pleasant transaction. His experience in the funeral business proved to be a valuable asset for a person in his position. We moved to McAllister from Vanetta, Oklahoma in July 2019. We love this city. I believe in letting people know when they've done a great job and it's sincerely Tabitha and Eddie Wrinkle. And that would be Virgil at the cemetery. Always nice, always nice when people speak well of our employees. The next thing I want to, I meant to do this at least at the last meeting, congratulate the McAllister Public Schools mock trial team. They are going to be competing at the national level. I believe it's the first time ever for for McAllister and it it's it's quite an honor to have them represent the city and hopefully they will come back to nationals winning it. And then lastly, there is, there's a group of people that are going to be passing a petition asking for a investigative audit. And I just, you know, I don't, I don't care. I mean, it's fine if people want to have an investigative audit and all that. They do need to pay attention to the cost, but there's a lot of misinformation about how this, how these things work. And and this, could you step up here for just a minute? Because I just want to go through a little bit of what we already do that people don't understand. Yeah, if we if we write a check, how many people see that?
In right, well, first off, they have to do a purchase request in order to, I guess, ask for those funds. We, it's sent to our accounts payable. They send it out to myself, city manager, assistant city manager, and also our financial account, our chief accountant also reviews that. It is signed off by those four individual, four individuals before a purchase order is is.
That check is written.
Yes.
So so internally, we've got at least four people.
Exactly.
Okay, so when we have, when we have our audit every year, which we are required by our charter to do.
Yes.
We hire another group that compiles all of the information.
Yes.
So that's adding another whole set of people that are that are seeing this documentation.
That is correct.
Then from there, it actually goes to the auditor.
Yes.
And the auditor sees that sees all of this.
Yes.
There's it, there's a large number of people.
Several levels.
Yeah, yeah, and to have access to all of this information. We do it every year.
Yes.
By law. Just off the top of your head, you have a ballpark idea of how many awards we've won in the last few years for for this?
Um, for audit this, the last six years. And we anticipate being awarded again this year. So we don't have.
And the award is what?
Our path for award is our financial reporting, which, you know, basically includes our transparency that we have in place with our city staff and and the outcome.
And were you, were you with us when the state auditor inspector came down and we did a town hall?
That I think I left right before that and then returned. I missed out on that.
Yeah, so we had, at that time, we had the state auditor inspector come down and he took questions from the public at that meeting. He took them by email, by phone for, I think it was probably close to six months.
Six months, I believe, yes.
Yeah, so hit the result of that was him coming back down and stating that we were one of the most transparent cities that he has ever dealt with as far as that goes. And also in in subsequent conversations I've had, they actually use McAllister as an example for other cities to look at when they're looking at how to do their financials and and transparency on it. So just wanted, because there's a lot of hyperbole being thrown around by an individual that's been hired by this group and and it's not accurate. I, you know, I have no problem whatsoever of having an audit done because I have 100% confidence that we will come out of it with accolades.
Yes.
Then and everything will be fine. The issue is that people just need to pay attention to the cost because the city of McAllister will have to pay for this. I I don't support, I won't sign a petition for it because I don't think we need to spend money to show that we're doing the right thing when we're already winning awards for doing the right thing.
Correct.
So.
And my recollection, John, is that that meeting, he also said there were absolutely no findings in that six-month investigation, which is apparently rare.
Yeah.
He had no problem with anything we were doing.
I know the same, the same on our part, I know for sure.
Our audits have been very clear.
So anyway, just like I said, if you, if if people, if the people in the house who want to have an audit, that's fine, we'll we'll do it. But just, if you have any questions, ask us.
What's the approximate cost?
We don't know for sure, but I'm anticipating it will be at least $75,000 and possibly up to 100,000. It's going to depend on how many, how many questions they ask in this audit and how much time it takes. So, you know, so that if they if they get enough signatures and people want to do it, that's all well and good. We will come out of it very well. Just consider the cost.
Sure. Thank you.
There was that. I will, we will recess the council meeting and I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from April 13th, 2021, regular meeting of the Council for Airport Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item B and to adjourn. Motion, Captain Smith, second counsel vote right. Any discussion? Court, which call, roll please.
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
About right?
Yes.
Richard? Counselman Richard?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Steve? Counselman Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yeah, send the motion carries. We would now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from April 13th, 2021, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item B, E, F, 1, 2, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second counsel vote right. Any discussion? Court, which call, roll please.
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
About right?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Send the motion carries. I would now take the motion to convene as the Council Retirement Trust Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from March 23rd, 2021, regular meeting of the Council Retirement Trust Authority. Approval of retirement benefit payments for the period of April 2021 and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second counsel vote right. Any discussion?
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
About right?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. I would now take a motion to go in the executive session to consider an active convening and executive session, which is title 25 Oklahoma Statute, statute 731. For confidential communications between public body and its attorney to discuss employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline or resignation of any individual salary, public officer, employee, particularly city manager, pit stays at. Motion, Councilman Smith, second counsel vote right. Any discussion? Court, which call, roll please.
Counselman Smith?
Yes.
About right?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and we're in executive session.